2024. Roll call, Mr. Lauer?
I have not heard from Ms. Shannelfeld. Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Porosco?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here. State of the place, leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record could show Ms. Shannelfeld. Mr. Ross?
First on the agenda, opening statement, proposed development, public hearing. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to accept comments on the proposed change to the Peters Township zoning map. This public hearing was advertised on the Observer Reporter and well as on the Peters Township website. The properties were posted, notifications were sent out to all property owners within 600 feet of the affected parcels. There will be a brief presentation by township staff. This will be followed by questions from council as well as comments from the audience. Action on the ordinance may occur at a regular meeting that follows. Mr. Lauer?
Yes, Peters Township has begun the process required for the rezoning of multiple parcels. These include parcels located at 490 and 555 Sugar Camp Road, most people know that as the Arabian Horse Farm, as well as property located at 231 Frobie Road, which is the Frobie Farm property. The effect of the zoning map change will be to remove these parcels from the Conservation Residential Overlay Zoning District. The process was initiated by the Peters Township Planning Commission at their meeting on December 14, 2023. It was unanimous recommendation of the commission that the Peters Township Council adopt an ordinance changing the township zoning map so as to remove the parcels listed above from the Conservation Residential Overlay Zoning District. At the January 11 meeting on 2024 of the Peters Township Planning Commission, commission members reaffirmed their support for the proposed change to the zoning map. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to afford interested parties the opportunity to present relevant testimony as to the proposed change to the zoning district map. Notices were published in the Observer Reporter on December 24 and December 31. The affected property owners were notified by mail and the properties were posted. In addition, there was a letter sent out to adjacent property owners. The council can, if it chooses, take action on the proposed ordinance tonight as part of its regular meeting. So, the map shows the location of these parcels and again, the effect is to remove them from the Conservation Overlay District.
And these are the last of the two, these last two parcels are all that remain in that act, is that correct?
There's a third parcel, it's located off of Venetia Road, there is a plan in to develop that, the Woodbrier.
Excuse me, my question would have been better undeveloped.
So, you know, if council has any questions, we should take.
Any comments from the audience? If you could step up to a microphone, please.
And if you could do one favor, is, there's a pad, if you could print your name and address.
My name's David Shute, I'm an attorney of the law from a Chapman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders LLP. We represent Frobie Management in this matter. I just wanted to bring three things to your attention, obviously. My client is opposing this proposed ordinance, but three things I think should be brought to your attention. Initially, the ordinance as drafted and circulated and posted on the website and sent to our client is ineffective as drafted, it's missing any operative language. In fact, the ordinance goes now therefore, it's ordained as follows and then absolutely nothing. So, it'd be impossible for you to adopt this ordinance tonight as it was advertised and if you did, it really wouldn't do anything. Secondly, even if you did adopt this ordinance and it was properly drafted, you re-advertized and adopted this ordinance, the third and fourth whereas paragraphs are demonstrably incorrect. They both say that as a fact, that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with and is compliant with the township's comprehensive plan. Take a look at your comprehensive plan, your future land use plan on page, I think it's 86 or 87, has your future land use, page 87 of your comprehensive plan, it's a future land use map, clearly showing the Frobie Management lots that are being rezoned as Conservation Residential. So, your planning commission's findings and the finding in the recital of this ordinance is incorrect on your comp plan. And then finally, this zoning map amendment is a blatant case of spot zoning. The Pennsylvania appellate courts have defined spot zoning as singling out a parcel property for different treatment from that accorded to similarly surrounding land indistinguishable in character for the economic benefit or detriment of the owner of the lot. Review of the council's meetings, minutes from December 11 to December 18 demonstrate that this ordinance is nothing but an arbitrary exercise of the council's zoning powers to frustrate Frobie's management's proposed development of the site. It's clear it came immediately after denying approval of a subdivision and land development plan. So, if adopted, this ordinance would be challenged as spot zoning. And that's, those are the three points I want to point out to you. It's not properly drafted, it has incorrect factual statements and it is blatant spot zoning and will be challenged. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Any other audience comments?
What's that? Matt Grigian, and it's 113 Shag Bark Lane.
What's your last name?
G R A C H. So, I live in the Oak Ridge Plan, which is directly adjacent to this proposed, the Frobie Farm proposed site. And right now, the plan is such a meanders, you know, they all have half acre plus lots and it's very nice, it's a nice community. This proposal with the third acre lots sits on the ridge of our plan and each house, there's has to be at least 20 of them and they're, they're all lined up on that ridge and they're only 50 feet apart and it looks bad. It looks cheap, okay, and it deters from the value of our property. So, this is why we object to it and this is why we would approve the amendment.
Thank you.
I'm not accustomed to getting up and.
I'm sorry, will you state your names?
Oh, I wrote it down, okay. Susan Crawford, 110 Shag Bark Lane, Venetia. I live in the same plan as Matt. I have a question for all of you, because we built 30 years ago this past November and we were so excited because you get some property and we raised four kids. How many plans in Peters Township have a quarter acre? Can anybody tell me that? How many plans in Peters Township currently have quarter acre? And I'm talking about freestanding homes, not patio homes or townhouses.
I can think of three or four.
Three or four.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if you're not counting, but if, not counting patio homes.
Not counting patio homes. Three or four. And of those homes, are they, are they off of a main road, for example Beebout Road or Valley Brook Road or McMurray Road? Or are they tucked away, as this one is, in our, so close to our plan where we don't have roads that are going to accommodate that many families and the homes are going to completely change the value of our property? And did those plans that you had with the quarter acre, did you alert all of the people that lived around there as to the traffic and how much more? And is it going to be as many homes as, or do they have as many homes as this is proposed to have? These are all really important questions for us that live in Oak Ridge. We, we love our neighborhood and it's, we love the feeling of farmland around us, you know, it's, it's, it's really special. So, I hope you sign this tonight and I hope you fight them because we're fighting for our property. We're, we're fighting for the value, we're fighting for the families of Peters. Our kids want to live here, they don't want to live in places where everything is stacked on top of each other. And when you answer that question about how many quarter acre properties, we always like to be on the same playing field as the Upper St. Clairs. How many, how many plans do they have with quarter acres? It's just some food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Levinka, H L A V I N K A.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Linda Levinka, I live at 272 Frobie Road. We have an acre lot, our neighbors adjacent to us all have more than an acre. We understand that there is development that is happening in Peters Township, but we feel very strongly that putting in half acre lots is going to devalue our area, which is, everyone loves where we live because it's wooded, because there's farms nearby. I also worry about the traffic. Our roads, Frobie Road, cannot handle a lot more traffic. We already have issues with people flying down the hills, that we have to be very careful coming out of the driveway. Now you're going to add more driveways, more traffic, people driving too quickly. Sugar Camp Road, where you're proposing one of these developments, also has a lot of very serious accidents. So, I feel very strongly that the township would not be, it would be a detriment to the township to put in these developments that are less than a half acre, but I understand definitely not a quarter acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Fine. I'm good, thank you. I was so happy to hear that you are going to revisit this issue again and I applaud you for taking it on. I think that the Conservation Overlay concept was something we wanted to try. We've already established that it was allowed to happen in too many places. It was identified as a process to allow developers to develop in difficult to develop areas, but there have been a number of developments where that's not the case. Sugar Brooks, one of them, the Frobie Properties, another of them. I can buy Pemberton because it's an escarpment, but the bottom line is there's got to be a limit and I think that if you go ahead and you stop this now and proceed with half acre and then only open the door for properties that appeal because it's necessity for them, then I think that you'd have a better chance of having resident support. The density you're proposing on Frobie is wrong for all the reasons everyone said. Frobie Road is just ridiculous, even if you do realign the park coming out of the, coming out of the park, the road is terrible. And with Pemberton putting houses coming out onto that road on the bend, it's going to be terrible. The volume is too much, the traffic there, the traffic in many other locations. So, whatever you can do to stop this, put it on hold. You know, the comprehensive plan that the gentleman referred to actually expired a while back. We're supposed to be doing another one, I presume we're working on that. And perhaps if we had escalated that, we would be ahead of this process now. But I applaud you for doing it, please approve it. I would be in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're pretty new to the area or to this plan compared to the other neighbors here and I just wondered was, what kind of traffic studies, if any, were done before this? As people have already mentioned, and I think we really realized it with the construction of the roundabout and the number of cars that were then using Frobie Road instead when it was closed. I like, we walk to the park almost every day and we try to push grandkids and strollers and it's not safe as it is now, so I can only imagine, we'll never be able to walk to the park again. And you live that close, but you may have to get in your car and drive to the park. So, I really hope that the council can take action.
I'm unaware of any, have we done any traffic studies on Frobie Road?
I believe Stahl Schaefer did them, actually, for the developer.
I think there was as part of the plan, I don't know, you know that mark? I looked at that mark.
There was one.
How long ago about in this?
It's about a year ago, a little over a year ago.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's August Delbert, I'm at 105 Meredith Drive and the, my neighbor who was up here previously to me basically made the point that I was going to make, I was going to ask if there was a traffic study. It sounds like there was a traffic study. I would be curious if that's available anywhere or if there's any way we could gain some information about the results contained within that traffic study or if you know if it's available.
If you contact my office, we can show you, you know, what you need to do to be able to get through that.
Okay, great. Because just from a personal standpoint and direct experience with Frobie Road, it's a skinny little thing and when you're coming along, you know, late at night through some of the turns, big trucks, big vehicles coming down at really high speeds, there's been a couple of times where I've been like, whoo, I, you know, that could have been bad. And so, just to kind of frame it in this way, I am very curious to learn about the understood effects and implications of that traffic study and, you know, judgment is out, but adding this much volume in terms of population, population density, increased traffic, there's just questions in my mind about danger associated with that, with this skinny little road, with huge influx of people who are going to need to use that as their major in and out bottleneck piece. Concerns about potential danger with that, concerns about it potentially being unethical if there are, if there is anything in the study that would indicate challenges with this small road and a huge influx of additional traffic. So, that's really all I came with a comment on. I thank you for your time.
Would you spell your last name for the court?
Sure. Delbert, D E L B E R T.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We're both lawyers, so we know that. And they still don't get my name right. No offense.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, well, yeah. Oh, you do.
Ann, yes, ma'am.
Ann Shainer, S H A N E Y R. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but do we have time on there or not?
No, there's no time.
Oh, there's no time.
No, this isn't that free.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Well, I'm used to talking speed mop, but anyway, you know, I can sympathize with what they're saying, but you all know me and I go back to the comprehensive plan, you know, we paid $35,000 for people to come in here to tell us what we needed to do, to help firm up our tax base and all that. And when I hear people say, oh, you know, our kids want to live here, well, I have been laughed at and told that, ha, 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 there's no affordable housing in Peters Township, okay? So, with these new developments, I don't know, even if they're on a quarter acre, how, you know, unaffordable or.
Affordable, I think.
Excuse me?
I don't think that they would be very affordable.
Yeah, they're not, yeah, so as far as bringing down somebody's property value, you know, I took a beating back in what, 2010 and 2011 with the gas drilling thing saying, oh, it's going to ruin your property value, okay? And then what did we have? We had Mr. Ball who agreed, hey, let's not have the drilling come in here. Because that wasn't, you know, what we were trying to do is prevent the derricks from going up and that would bring down your property value. But I think that if these houses are not, she's thinking, they look cheap, but they're not going to be cheap, then you're not going to have riffraff moving in there, if that's what you're all worried about, I don't know. And as far as development goes, this is called progress, okay? This is called progress. I mean, I don't know where people get the idea that sure, when you moved here initially, it was farmland because that's what it was. And it's a fool if you think that's not going to be developed. So, you know, I get tired of hearing this and, you know, I'll tell you some other things at the other meeting after this one, but, because we have to look at Norse Terbein. Now, you might not look, you might not like how Norse Terbein looks, okay? But I'll tell you what, I don't think they have a problem with their tax base. They don't have a problem.
They also have a casino.
Well, they, well, they do, but they, but as far as their tax base goes, they have no problem because they've got developments coming up.
Well, I don't think this is a tax base issue. I mean, I recognize what you're saying and I agree with you that, you know, at some point you're going to be fully developed and then you're going to have a tax base issue. But I don't think that this is about tax base.
Okay, I know. And if it's a matter between a quarter acre to a half acre, because I'm on an acre, but I'm in the old part of Peters, okay? That's where they first built homes here. So, I'm in the old part and, you know, when you get older, you kind of wish maybe you were on a quarter acre, I don't know. It's a lot of land.
You have to cut that grass.
Cut that grass. So, I, I'm just saying, you know, because if we're going to do another comprehensive plan, I just want to see something done because we still don't have a town center where we can all go and put up a little box and have people listen to me, okay? We still don't have our town center. And, you know, and we still don't have, I.
This is your box right here.
Okay, and those.
And everything.
Well, and those strip malls, you know, I'm sorry, I don't understand why they can't be talked to and have them joined because we were told about that too. And when I hear about traffic, there's, traffic's bad everywhere in Peters Township, okay? Come on, Galley Road, that gets clogged. So, we get clogged everywhere. So, you know, it's just the way it is. It's called development and, you know, that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience on the public hearing?
Dr. Chairman, I'll move.
Mr. Porosco, before you close the public hearing, the solicitor has recommended that we have a brief executive session.
You need a vote to have, that's just a.
I'll move that we recess court a quick and brief executive session.
Second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience in that short recess executive session. Mr. Smith, comment to the audience?
Yes, when council for Frobie brought up the fact that the version of the ordinance that he has did not contain information as to what was going to be changed, I think what council, what you read was now therefore and your version was blank.
Correct.
Yeah, in an effort to be secure in what we would ultimately pass. We need to pass something that there's an ordinance properly advertised and properly noticed with all the information contained in it, so it's not a nullity. My concern to council was if they would close this hearing and take action tonight, that there'd be a question as to whether that'd be set aside. I don't have the information as to what went out the door, I believe council that he has at least what he read. The version we have and council has is the full ordinance. So, there's some discrepancy, but when you do new ordinances, you err on the side of caution because it has to be done correctly for it to take legal effect. And so, for tonight's purposes, what I ask council to do is to vote to close this hearing and then to re-advertize, have another hearing and then take a vote after that to clear any potential deficiencies that were raised by council. And I believe that's the prudent version of what we need to do in order to make sure because if we ultimately pass this, wherever this may go, it has to be done correctly and correctly is full advertisement.
Thank you, John.
Dr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Lauer, seven, nothing.
Do you, do you need a motion to re-advertize?
I think we have to do that at our, well, we're still in our regular meeting, so we can do that at this time rate.
Well.
Public hearing is not closed.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed, we need to open the.
You can do that as your first major business after you get through your opening of your meeting.
Are you going, am I taking this?
No.
No, you're going.
That's what I thought.
You can, but you won't get bad for it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll start the regular council meeting.
We can move it off there. I'll make a motion that we approve the transcript of the public hearing on November 27, 2023.
I have one comment on that, my name is spoken incorrectly.
Mr. Lauer? Well, I have the record, Mr. Steigl's name is typed incorrectly in those minutes.
So, have you proven the minutes?
Yes. Yes.
The public hearing, Chris?
No, just the public hearing. We have a motion, again, the second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve or oppose? All right, seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Approval of minutes, council reorganization meeting held on January 2, 2024.
I'm going to approve those minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Any special reports? None. Actually, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we take those steps necessary, including but not limited to re-advertising the ordinance that we had a public hearing on earlier tonight.
Only thing I would add, Mr. Curry, is that just so the record's clear, that we continue to seek pending status of the ordinance.
Okay, I'll add that in.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment because I'm sure the audience is very confused and in essence, what we are obligated to do or being advised to do is re-advertize with the ordinance revision as it occurs in the docket that we were all provided up here in front of council, okay? So, there's nothing that is changing from the standpoint of what this council was dealing with, but it's the, I'm going to call it the error in the publishing of the document that went out in the announcement, so.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments, limited to five minutes for non-agenda items unless extended by council. Yes?
Shall I sign this?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Donald McGreevy. This is my business partner, Rory McQuary. We're the business and property owners of 3172 Washington Road for 30-plus years. This is concerning the new billboard across the street of 3165 Washington Road. There are several violations of Peters Township ordinances that have led to the encroachment of our property. In an effort to understand how this happened, we discovered inaccurate deeds and surveys that led to an invalid permit for the billboard. Over the past seven months, we've provided evidence in the form of, one, our deed, two, the official 1939 Pennsylvania Department of Transportation final drawing of our section of U.S. Route 19 that clearly shows the property beyond the right-of-way across Route 19; three, full details of the inaccurate deeds and survey involved with the property that was purchased; four, a certified survey detailing the encroachment. This piece of property is currently and has always been on Peters Township and county maps. As it, it has since been removed from the county GIS map. Normally, normally this line would be removed instead of changed to a different line due to a property transfer. After 30 years at this location, we posted our property for sale in October of 2022, but this issue has forced us to remove the property from the market due to this encroachment. The separation of our parcel happened when Route 19 was planned in the late '30s and later constructed. We have known that we had property across Route 19 since we purchased it in 1993. On Memorial Day, 2023 weekend, the billboard signpost was set on that property in question. On June 7, I contacted the title company and provided them our deed. On June 8, I had an in-person conversation with Seth Coons from the planning department, and asked him, how did this happen? He provided me with the site plan for the billboard. On June 10, Patrick Wolfington of Washington Peters Land Co., the billboard owner, contacted me, and after several email exchanges, he told me that they saw what I was referring to a while back when they first identified the parcel, but they never count on GIS mapping for boundaries and ownership. The delay between now and then is due to the research, obtaining documents, and obtaining the survey. After investing hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars, we have a certified survey that details the encroachment. We've made numerous attempts for the sign owner to accept these facts, owing to be denied repeatedly. On January 11, I had an in-person meeting with the Assistant Township Manager Kyle Sefet, excuse my, that's incorrect, of Peters Township, and only to discover that nothing that we're aware of has been done to clarify this issue since I questioned it seven months previous. On January 17, I emailed the township manager, Mr. Lauer, due to no response again.
But we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
On January 18, I receive a one-line email that says, send me a copy of your survey. I, in turn, called Mr. Lauer, and my impression was more the same denial of the facts. I have provided the PDF of our survey to Mr. Lauer the same day, and for all these reasons, this is why I'm addressing counsel tonight. Thank you for your time.
And I have to tell you, I don't think we've heard anything at all about the matter, so...
So which, which billboard is this now?
This is the, the new billboard, if you're going down...
By Cagney Drive or the one?
Left-hand side.
The one by Severance?
Yeah. And so you, I think they're really, and I was, like I said, we have a meeting tomorrow that we were going to discuss this. I think there's actually two concerns. One, the, the application for the billboard, there was a survey submitted, sealed by a surveyor, that does not agree with the survey that Mr. McGreevy has. And so there's a private property dispute there, and, and that needs to be resolved, but the township's not in a position to resolve that. That will always be something you end up...
I'm not asking the township to resolve my property dispute. I'm asking you to resolve the fact of how this got approved when it should have been well-known that that was my piece of property. That piece of property is on every map.
Wait a second. Do we get a survey from the applicant that showed they owned the property?
Yes, you do.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, you know, that's what we have to go by. I mean, I mean, we're sorry if...
And this is exactly why I've been trying to work this out with the property owner, okay? But then I discover all these other things through the process.
The other thing that I will agree with Mr. McGreevy on is, and, you know, based upon his email and our conversation, I went back and pulled the application. I think there's a problem with the, the permit as it's, as it was issued in terms of the location of the billboard on the property.
Yes, for starters, it says that it's 31 feet off the road. It's the post that's 31 feet, and then the sign comes towards the road. Its sign is supposed to be 45 feet from the, from the, what, from the curb.
It, the way the ordinance reads is that the, the sign needs to be the greater of 16 feet or half the height of the sign.
It's the height of the sign.
Yeah. And it's not in that location. I would agree that the, the sign is improperly located.
We're not going to settle this tonight, but at the same point in time... In addition to that, the initial permit was in the previous property owner's name, and that's not, that's not the way it goes. The, the property owner, billboard owner, has to apply for a permit themselves.
So are we saying, Paul, that the sign, that the post wasn't put where the location was shown on the plan?
No, what I'm saying is, I think the township, and I'm attempting to determine who's made this determination, have misinterpreted the ordinance, because it appears that it is the post of the sign that's located in the, in the proper location. But the plain English reading of the ordinance would have you to believe it would be the edge of the sign, because otherwise, you could cantilever a sign out as far as you want and put it. And, and in this case, that's exactly what I think you see.
And this is precisely what I'm talking about, because that's not the only issue. There's so many issues with this permit, you need to look into it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. It's signed up the sale of our property, and that's why I'm trying to be expedient about this, and we've been seven months already.
We've heard your concerns. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can, can you get a update to counsel on this?
Yes, one of the pieces of information that Mr. McGreevy has, I didn't realize he had, that would be very useful, is that, that PennDOT map. That would be useful. I have Mr. Mudry right now attempting to get that map, but if you have it, he could bring it to, if you could bring it tomorrow, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lauer. Any other audience comments?
Anne Shaner, Robin Hood Lane, 1, 2, 3. I just wanted to say, the last time I was here, I brought up the incident that the NAACP had requested disposition on. So I learned more information about that. So I just wanted to say that I did learn that it was not the officer who initially had said the word, okay, the N-word, but he, he didn't, he then did use the N-word back to the defendant. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I've been cleared up with that, okay? So, and I understand that it has been resolved. I also wanted to say that the hearing about the shooting on Thomas Road, that got continued till February 29, so I have nothing to tell you about that. However, I have done an informal survey, as you know that I am known to do, and I go around asking people if they've heard about the shooting on Thomas Road, and nobody knows about the shooting on Thomas Road, okay? So I was thinking, how come the police, I think it would be a good idea, and I think it would be a way for Peters Township to be a role model with our police department, to perhaps give police reports to the newspaper, okay, or post it on their website? How many arrests have been made? What arrests have been made? Because nobody knows anything about anything that's going on as far as arrests go, okay?
Ms. Shaner, you know, the police reports are available at the police station, but about four, what's about four or five years ago that the Observer stopped?
I know that, you told me that, don't waste my time. I know that, okay? I know that. And I have done a poll, and I have learned that no other municipality does send their police reports to the newspaper. They all quit, okay? That's why maybe...
Well, that, that, that's a mischaracterization. It's the news, newspapers have decided not to collect those anymore.
Well, I...
And then the other thing I would point out is, if you do go to the Peters Township Police website, you will find information about criminal activity that occurs in town. That actually is on that.
I think it's on the Facebook page, too.
Well, then, you know, you need to make that known on your site, too, so that, because I can't find it, because I had a burglary on my street whenever those Chilean people were around doing their burglary thing, and I didn't even know. I didn't know there was a burglary on my street. I'm just saying, anything that helps the citizens to, I mean, if you want me to start a petition, I mean, we're a home-ruled community. If I get enough signatures, I can have this done, okay? Don't make me do it. I don't want to devote the time to it. But I think we should, you know, we, they should be more forthcoming and make it more easily available to know what's happening in the township, because we are a home-ruled community. I mean, we could petition the heck out of you. These people that were here tonight, they apparently don't know that. They don't know the power that they have, okay? The other thing I wanted to say is, I've also done a survey with other, well, I know North Terbein, North Terbein does it, Carroll Township does it, and also the city of Monongahela. They give free leaf collection. Now, you might think, why are you concerned about this? Well, I have a lot of leaves, okay? So...
We heard you have an acre a lot.
I have a lot of leaves. And, you know, I, they, they get it done for free. And, and I might be wrong, but I think, did we get charged $150 for them to do it twice a year with us? That's what I'm told, because I've asked people.
Inside of the, of the trash contract, there is a, a price per home for the purposes of collecting the bags. Then in addition to that, the township, in certain areas, particularly areas where there are large amounts of trees, where people prefer to rake it, that service is offered for a fee by the township, and the public works employees go out and do that.
Yeah, right. And I'm saying, why don't we do it for free? North Terbein gets it for free, Little Monongahela gets it done. They give their residents free leaf vacuuming, and also Carroll Township.
Any public, you know, Paul, do they get grants for that or anything?
Oh, it's an operating expense. I will tell you, it's not inexpensive to do. When we looked at doing leaf collection, when we first were required to do it, one of the things we discovered in talking to people who do all of their collection from the curb, they're actually spending more on overtime for leaf collection than they do for snow removal. And, you know, and the fact of the matter is, the, the people, not everybody in town, I think last year it was 200 and some homes out of 8,000 utilized that service, and that, and when you have a specialized service like that, it ought to be charged back to those people, instead of having everybody in town pay for something that other people need.
Well, I disagree with him.
Does the waste management collect some free? No.
There, there is no public service that's free. It's, it's part of your garbage bill.
Well, then I say, you know what, maybe North Terbein and them, they're putting it in their taxes, I don't know. But, you know, all I know is I talked to residents in North Terbein, because I see them putting their leaves to the curb, and I said, how much do you pay for them? And they said, it's free. Looked at me like I was nuts. I said, they said, where do you live? I said, Peters Township. They said, are you kidding me? So, anyway.
Thank you.
But I will tell you, Mrs. Shaner, that if you, if whoever you've been talking to goes on LexisNexis Community Crime Map, it's free, and they can get five miles' worth of crime reported to them, to their email.
Well, I, I just think the police should be more forthcoming.
This is coming from the LexisNexis.
That's from the police department.
That's where I found it, on the police website.
Yeah, we pay for membership for that, don't we?
What, me, as a resident can go on the Lexis?
Yeah, you can go on the website.
Yeah, you can go on the Peters Township Police website, and you'll see the LexisNexis.
And I can go on there.
And you sign up for your email, and it'll be sent to you.
All right, then I guess I'll have to do that, because, and now I'm going to have to blast that out to everybody.
Yep.
Thanks for doing that. Any other audience comments? All right, thank you. Moving on, new unfinished business. New business, the consent agenda. Tonight's council meeting includes a consent agenda containing five items. These five items can be approved on one action rather than filing motions on each item separately. The purpose of the consent agenda is to move routine items along quickly so that council has more time for issues that are more important or that may require discussion. Items on this evening's consent agenda include, one, resolution changing authorized signers on bank accounts held at Washington Financial; number two, resolution changing authorized signers on bank accounts at CFS Bank; number three, acceptance of the 2023 survey of financial condition; four, exoneration of Ryan Jurowski and Jordan Tax Service from their obligation to collect 2023 Peters Township property tax; five, special permit for St. Benedict's Church authorizing trail banners and off-premise temporary signs for their fish fry. Are there any items that a member of council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately?
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Moving on to ordinance amending Peters Township code, ordinances, chapter 440 zoning, section 400 district classification, figure 40.1, current Peters Township zoning map.
Dr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table this issue.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Renewal of various insurance coverages, including automobile, fire, and liability for 2024.
So every three years, Peters Township solicits proposals for insurance coverages, for insurance, fire, and liability. In 2023, the township solicited for those proposals, and proposals provide for a fixed premium for one year. Renewals, for a variety of reasons, can and often do result in increases in premiums. That being said, the, the renewal this year has resulted in an unprecedented increase from $162,986 to $236,503. And in part, that's because the value of the Fire Station 3 and the Rolling Hills Park is included in that premium. In addition, the loss experience of the township over the last five years is sudden, as well as the increase in expenditures in the most recent budgets. The thing that I'd point out to you, that in, in 2023, Peters Township is relatively unique in that it bids its insurance, and last year, if you recall, we had a difficult time getting proposals, despite the fact that five insurance agencies expressed interest and six insurance companies expressed interest in quoting. The reality was that we ended up with only two quotes, and one of the reasons why we could not get quotes is that our prior premium was so low... And one of the reasons why we could not get quotes is that our prior premium was so low that people did not think that they could present a competitive quote. So the two quotes you had last year was approximately $163,000 for the renewal, and the only other quote you got was $322,000. So I don't know that this necessarily makes anyone feel any better, but that quote we have for $236,000 is still substantially lower than what was quoted by the competing company last year. You really don't have a choice in this matter. We can't be without insurance. And it's going to be my recommendation that Peters Township Council buy the insurance coverage with Munich RE Specialty Insurance Company through the Campbell Insurance Agency.
So moved.
So the table that's in our summary, I'm assuming, is incorrect?
No, that table is actually from last year. If you read what...
Oh, I thought it was...
Yeah, it shows you, it shows you what those quotes were last year.
Last year.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have a question. If we renew this, can we rebid it?
One of the things that I suggested to Campbell Insurance Agency is that we may not wait for the third year to rebid this, and we may well go out and rebid it.
I'm not happy with this. I'm telling you right now. I mean, you know, you've got two quotes. I mean, you know, why did we wait so long for these to come in?
But...
And how did you come up with the seven or 10 people that you were going to do? Is that somebody that makes that list up?
Yes. We hire a consultant who's helped us year and do this process on many occasions. And what you had was, last year, five insurance agencies and six companies who expressed an interest in doing it. And there aren't very many more than that that actually write municipal insurance.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Six, one, Mr. Lauer. I M D new business approval for recording purposes of the Trax Farm Consolidation subdivision number one is shown on drawing prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, dated November 1st, 2023 for Trax Farm Incorporated.
So George and Kelly Delastini own a 1.3-acre parcel of land located off of Sugar Camp Road. The parcel is surrounded by 33.7 acres owned by Trax Farm, and the purpose of the subdivision is to transfer 0.545 acres of land from the property owned by Trax to the Delenties. So if you look at this drawing, it kind of shows you exactly what's occurring here. The interesting thing is, you've actually approved the subdivision once before, but the deeds were never drawn up and recorded, so...
Whose fault is that?
Well, that's the fault of the property owner.
That's what I thought.
The planning commission recommends approval of the plan, subject to it being reviewed, and acceptance by the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. And it's my recommendation that council approve the plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Approval for recording purposes, Trax Farm Consolidation subdivision, Plan Number Two, is shown on drawing prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated November 1st, 2023 for Trax Farm, Inc.
So these are two large parcels of land, one of which is predominantly in Peters Township, the other one is predominantly in Union Township. And all they're trying to do is, if you go down Turkeyfoot Road, and this is where the market, and you can see where the Trax Farm market structures are, there's a pond there, and they want to get that pond onto the property that's principally in Union Township. So what they're really doing is simply transferring that small area where the pond is over to the other parcel.
But the land's still going to be in Peters, right?
The land's still going to be in Peters, but even if you look up above, see where that blue line juts out? That's in Peters, and it's in the principally, that parcel's in Union. There's no requirement that the municipal line serve as a property line. And this makes sense, that that pond be on the, you know, a tract of land that they intend to continue to operate.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes of Trax Farm Consolidation subdivision Plan Number Two, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated November 1st, 2023 for Trax Farm, Inc., subject to the required conditions of the planning commission.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Moving on, item F, appointment to Peters Township Planning Commission.
Dr. Chairman, before we begin these appointments, I just again want to say that as long as I've been on council, I'm always impressed by the quality of the applicants we get for the various different boards and commissions. It's always difficult to make these decisions. There are qualified people that don't get on, and we wish we had plus space for every one of them, but unfortunately, we don't. So with that being in mind, I will make a motion that we appoint D Jonathan Waldinger to the planning commission to serve as alternate B.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstaining from all these, because I missed the interviews.
I'll do the same. So the motion, second. Mr. Waldinger gets approved, five, nothing. Next, appointment for Peters Township, Peters Township Sanitary Authority.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ryan Kennedy to the Peters Township Sanitary Authority.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
Oppose? Same. Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Appointment to Peters Township Construction Appeals Board.
With Mr. Kennedy going to the sanitary authority, that creates a vacancy on the construction appeals board. I move that we appoint Mr. Bernie Fisher to the opening on the construction appeals board.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, abstaining. Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
I'm going to make a motion, after echoing what Mr. Cozer said about the quality of our applicants and the difficulty in not being able to place them all, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint to the Peters Township Youth Commission Mary-Lise Freuli and Jim Thomas.
I'm second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Same. Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next, appointments of Parks and Record.
Who's the school district's chosen? Oh, Mr. Guyer is now seeking reappointment. Okay, fine. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Guyer.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
It's because you know.
All right. We'll move on to payroll and bills.
Yeah, I reviewed those prior to the meeting this evening, fondament order, and I recommend it to be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Correspondents?
You have a letter at your docket, Dr. Taylor from the Health Department of Environmental Protection, DM Safety Division sent a correspondence to Mark indicating that they've reviewed the alternative analysis and indicated which of those alternatives they think are viable, and they have requested additional information. Mr. Zomitis has been in touch with our consultants to get that information so that we can provide it to the DEP.
Mark, can you kind of just explain those in layman's terms? I tried to read that letter, and I didn't...
Yeah, I was kind of confused, too, because it was talking about one. I didn't even see that one there. It was like 6A or something.
So our intention is for the alternative that we feel is in the best interest of the township, which is armoring the crest and downstream area of the dam so we don't have to mess with the level of the lake. DEP said that was a viable alternative, that they would like to see really, for lack of a better word, like the nitty-gritty calculations. What we provided them before, what Rizzo associates, the fund that we hired, provided them was like a summary of calculations. They want to see like knots and bolts, hydrologic and hydraulic calc for determining whether this is going to be a viable option.
And that was the only option, too, to maintain the lake at its current level?
Pretty much, yeah.
How much are we in with Rizzo to date?
I mean, I want to say the neighborhood is $60,000. That was our original contact. It's in that neighborhood.
So we're going to be requesting a change order from them, or...
I haven't heard. I just emailed them the other day, after I read the letter six times to understand what they were asking. I talked it over with Rizzo and said, hey, please. And I have not heard back from them yet, but ultimately, that's what we're going to have to do, is get the calculations from them and provide them to the DEP.
And I don't know that you're going to have a charge for the calculations, because the calculation's already been done. I think, you know, to move this beyond simply an alternatives analysis and actually do the engineering, you're going to incur a significant...
That's announced, yeah. I mean, when we get into like actual construction drawings and everything, it'll be a sizable amount, but that's...
You're still a long way off, though, between this letter and work being done at the dam.
Mr. Brown?
Anthony Brown. One, two, three, Druid Drive.
Can you be sure to write your name?
Yes, sir. I met a highly intelligent young man, Sam Perlmutter, that has done a lot of work on this whole dam situation. So my question would be, the letter that you're talking about and all that data, is it available, where he can research it also? I think he could be an asset to you.
It's in the docket online.
It's on the docket online?
Yeah.
Okay.
The letter doesn't really say much.
No, you're right. It's hard to read.
Yeah, well, it only asks for us to provide the information as opposed to...
So there's not, the details are not on the site that he could look into, because he's contacted a lot of people?
Yeah. He's contacted us to do.
He's welcome to review any calculations he wants. I'm not sure if he's going to come up with...
I'm just asking you, can he contact you then and get that data, or...
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the correspondence letter?
Nope.
Moving on to reports.
The only thing I might point out is that apparently the hottest ticket in town is the Princess Ball. To Mr. Brooks's credit, he recognizes that the demand for tickets for that far exceed what we have done in the past, and they have found a way to greatly increase the number of people who can attend that. So there's a large waiting list. They're contacting those people and making it available to...
Yes, I can tell you, the morning of the signups, at my wife's behest, I got there at 8:10, and there were already 12 people in line ahead of me.
Yes.
Guys were standing outside in like two-degree temperatures to get priority for the Princess Ball.
And that's one of the things that Mr. Brooks has indicated, that we're going to do online registration for that. You know, people who can't take off work to be able to be there shouldn't be in a disaffection.
It is a great event. Having four daughters myself, it's brought lots of memories throughout the years, so thanks for, Mr. Brooks, on that. Miscellaneous?
I have two, like, reports, I think, I'd like to comment on. One, I have been talking to Paul relative to my personal assessment relative to snow removal and the progress. I do think in this last storm, we did a very good job, although I heard a lot of people, particularly out east, making comments with regard to the condition of their roads. You've told me that we can expect to get a report...
In the, in the Public Works Department report, I'll be honest with you, I didn't look to see whether it's there, and the back of the monthly report should be the snow report. And that was one of the events. So each of the, each of the events on the, on the subsequent monthly report, that they will be there. I will tell you, we got compliments today in for, for the last snowstorm, so...
Yeah, and I am also rendering that same comment, but my other question is, I think before the close of potential repaving season, I made the comment with regard to the poor condition of Route 19 from Gateshead down to Valley Brook. With recent excavation that's happened down there, it's worse now than it was two years ago. We need to contact them and make certain that we're on a list to have that section. It's the worst one in Western Pennsylvania that I travel.
I'll tell you what, we'll contact, not only PennDOT, but we'll contact the state rep and the senator.
I don't know whether anybody else agrees with me, but...
Which section?
I totally agree about 19 being awful. But you're, just to clarify, PennDOT handles that?
Yes.
Through Peters. So then who handles, like, through Upper St. Clair, Bethel?
Oh, for snow removal?
Yeah.
Upper St. Clair chooses to do that. You know, we do an awful lot of state roads in Peters, but we do not do Route 19, and we're, we're really not equipped or staffed to be able to do that.
I've witnessed St. Clair putting as many as seven trucks at a time to do during a heavy storm, and it's just a resource we don't have.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, because I got that question a lot, but I do agree, because I was out at an early hour, and Peters was horrible, and then you go into Upper St. Clair, and it's like a line, and it's...
It was just wet. Thank you.
Any other comments under reports? Moving on to miscellaneous with the tentative council calendar, Mr. Lauer.
These are listed as dates that are set. These are listed as questions. So talking to Dr. French, I think the first date that a joint workshop's possible is April 29th. I don't know whether that works for people's calendars, if you don't know.
I'm sorry, what day was that?
It's a Monday, April 29th.
I have to reserve comment. I don't know.
All three of those dates work for me.
Yeah, I'm good. It's fine.
Okay. So April 15th is fine with everybody, too, for the board recognition? And then we're going to set the township tour for July 1st.
Is that 29th meeting open to the public? We can't say anything, but can we?
Yeah. It's a public meeting.
We've been there.
Yeah. It's going to be hosted by the school district, and I'm not sure whether it's over at their building or up at the high school, so...
Okay. Moving on, Druid Drive cell tower update.
Well, I promised you an update, and I, from having talked to Melissa Cook from Diamond Communications today, AT&amp;T and Diamond Communications have come together with a solution. What they want to do is to first talk to the property owner prior to making that, that public. So they're, they're in the attempt on, in the very near future to have a meeting with Mr. Frizzell for the purposes of, since he is the leaseholder, to talk to about that solution, and as soon as they do that, then we know, then let us know what that solution is. And so, I mean, that's where we are right now.
Tony Brown, one, two, three, Druid. Paul's been doing a lot of communications on this, and it's appreciated. So we're about 16 months into it. Ed called me, Mr. Frizzell. They have a meet tomorrow. Are you with the understanding that AT&amp;T and Diamond are only offering one solution, and it's kind of up to whether Ed accepts it or not?
My understanding is they have a solution, so maybe there will, may well be one solution. And I don't know whether it's up to whether he accepts it or not. I don't know that. You know, because...
It's a business.
Yeah. And so I, I think what's appropriate is for them to sit down with him and work out what those details are, and then whether he agrees or doesn't agree, or whether they want to move ahead, then it will come to us, because it will require a permitting.
And I think when y'all looked at the contract, his contract runs through 2030?
It's, yes.
It was longer than he thought.
Yeah, much longer than what he thought.
And historically, in a buy-sell situation, that would go with a property at the side of the sale?
Yeah.
All right. So are you getting the feeling from them when you discuss this with them that it's a vertical run situation and unraveling the cabling?
That's my understanding, that they're trying to do something to, to shield the cabling, and if that doesn't work, I think that they may well, it may be either or, either what you have out there right now or this. And I don't know that there's lots of other alternatives, so...
Okay.
I do think in all fairness to everybody on both sides, I think the property owners should be having this discussion first before the township gets...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's tomorrow, so we'll know a lot about that. So I know that Mr. Steigel advanced a, it was passed unanimously, let's rel...
Although that's, and those, those policies have been adopted, and if this comes in, it will be reviewed under those policies.
So if this proposal were to show, show up today, the same exact scenario, what changes would you see would have occurred that would be different if this was to happen a day versus 16 months ago?
I think one of the things that's required that may not have been required previously is the notification of all the neighbors. So I think that's, that, in fact, is, is something that's significantly different. But in terms of the, the, the nature of the required review...
Right.
It would be, it would be the same. It calls out, you know, Mr. Zomitis's role in this, it calls out a role for the, for the planning director and the, and the zoning officer. I, I will guarantee you, you know, we'll be more diligent with regard to how that review occurred.
Yes, Seth had mentioned before that this was kind of a one-off, and it went outside the office. It wasn't really renewed here first, it went to some kind of outside council. And then it just got staked.
Well, no, there's a, we have a special counsel who deals with items related to wireless communication, cable television, and Mr. Cohen is somebody that we, we turn to for advice, because as you well remember, the whole question was, is this in fact a location? And that's why we issued that stop work order, so we could get a clarification from our counsel as to whether or not this constituted that. And, and he's the one who's in a much better position than we are to make that determination, and it was his conclusion that it did.
So Lady mentioned earlier on the Froby Farm, the notification, you just mentioned notification. I remember when the things that you were proposing, I think it included notifying up to 900 feet, and I asked if that would be extended?
Six, it's, well, the notification policy is 600 feet, which is twice the distance that is, that is required, but in, in this case, we have a situation with the development coming up near the roundabout, we have made a point to notify everybody in the neighborhoods adjacent, which is way beyond the 600 feet, because there certainly has been interest expressed.
And then when I remember you discussing this, that there was the possibility of maybe an open forum, not just notification, but there would be a forum where people could comment on this?
But I, I, there are, in the, the act, there are time limits and that, that we can't afford to miss, or you'll have a deemed approval in that case.
Right.
And it isn't like there's, there's a lot of, of options in terms of what can and can't be required of, of the, of the cellphone carrier, so...
All right, thank you all.
I'm sorry, Paul, my recollection, which gets grayer and grayer year after year, but anyway, my recollection that we talked in terms of, in a future process, we would expect the submission to include a graphic representation of the tower that would be proposed, okay? And that was not a topic that was properly revealed to us before this one went in. Is that now a criteria?
That is something that needs to be included in this.
No. And that's an important observation, I think, that needs to be.
Would that include the cable lines that were down the falls?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other issues or comments on Druid Cell Tower? All right, thank you. Next zoning hearing board report.
There's no hearing board report, there were no hearings.
Anything under garbage collection municipal?
Only, only thing is, in your docket is the list of all the outstanding garbage liens. I had an opportunity to sit down with Jordan, and my direction to him is that any outstanding balances $500 or more, that we should begin to proceed to execute on those liens, and so we...
And I encourage you all to look, because you can find names of people that we know and friends and things of that nature. It's kind of embarrassing to say that's the case.
Okay, any items for next, oh, sorry, comment?
Oh, she wants her glasses.
Any, any items for next agenda or next meeting?
Do we know when the football team revision is going to be?
Well, it was, we were going to do it tonight, but I didn't think tonight would be a good, good night to do that, given the number of people I anticipated. There were actually far less than I anticipated. So we can do that in the near future.
Are they bringing the whole team?
I don't know. We're going to get Kyle to work with the football coach and see what makes sense.
He'll work with him.
All right, yeah, Kyle, so you're in charge of figuring that out.
With that.
All right, all right, nothing else on the Jordan Phillips meeting?